Just a very, really only one comment from the chair, and I just wanted to thank all the voters. It's been three weeks since Action Day, and since voters approved the revenue. But I think we have all been gratified for the outcome of what I think we have felt through this plan, through the process of planning for this school, which is that there has been overwhelming communities supporting us, and I think that's great, and we've got a lot of work going forward. I know the board is completely committed to this, and I know the community is committed as well, so that's terrific, and thank you to the voters again. Okay, so we have minutes from the October 23 meeting, we have a motion to approve of this. One of the burdens of the vice president of the board is... I have a second from Megan. Any discussion? Any corrections? All in favor? All opposed? Don't be opposed, I'm going to abstain because those are not adjustments needed, General Patrick, any adjustments? And this is our first public session, we want a public forum comment. This is comments generally directed at the general forum comments from the public. Committee reports 8.0, 8.1, that means Morris High School, those are the primary...
And Steve said, like a thank, the people that came out and voted on November 7th was 3,195 yes votes, 1,020 no votes. So as a result, some of our next steps, we have people up at the site every day doing tests right now. We're in the process of executing our purchase and sales agreements with the land, and if you go to our website, you can see the building committee meetings will start back up this Thursday and pretty much run on a weekly basis for a while, and then go to bi-weekly basis. So that will be a lot of the interior design work, and also trying to improve and continue to work on the exterior design of the building. So an exciting time. I did pass out to you, I guess we can put it under building project update if you're okay with it, I just passed out something from Leslie Manning, who is our fundraising person for this project, and the fundraising committee will meet for the first time officially this Wednesday. And the honorary co-chairs of this campaign will be Dr. Glenn Cummings, who is the president of USM Morris Class of 79, John Morse IV, Class of 63, who's a local businessman and also active in United Way and Big Coast Hospital, and Bill and Sally Haggott, who have been very visible supporters of the Morris Alumni Association and the Bath Area YMCA. We have other people that are on the team as well. We have Kay Beveridge, Rick Bissin, Lou Ensel from the board, Brian Hatch, who used to be a teacher at Morris, and Susan Stover. So again, the first meeting will be on Wednesday, and we really appreciate the time that these people are giving to this committee. We also have, I guess I would say resurrected, the Education Foundation. Bill Racine has always been on that, but any donations that we receive and gifts will go through the Education Foundation, and we felt it was important to add a few members to that committee and to the foundation, and Lorna Ryan, who a lot of you know from Woolwich, was on our finance committee, has agreed to be on that, as well as Kara Thalen, who is on our building committee. So we'll have more to report in December, and we look forward to the meeting on Wednesday.
Thanks, Patrick. Any questions from Patrick at this point?
When do we get the first report from Leslie? She's doing the reports last week.
Yeah, I can't remember. I have to go back and look at her contract. I think we said quarterly reports to the board. She intended to be here tonight. She's going to give us monthly updates like this with the holiday. It just didn't get to, I gave it on Wednesday afternoon. But yeah, the plan is, I think, just to give you a monthly update in writing, and for her to be at as many meetings as possible, just to answer any questions you might have.
Any other, any more questions from Patrick? When can we expect from the finance statement this week? Do you have any idea when we'd expect a discussion on what financing they have, you know, issue?
Right, yeah. We talked about having a finance committee meeting the 1st of December because we are working with our financial consultant, Dick Renigan, about how much to go out for our first ban on. And so we're hoping to, by the holiday break, is to have, you know, how much we're going to go out for, and actually going out to bid on that, and have the money by January, correct?
Right.
Okay. So we hope to bring it to the finance committee to show, you know, to talk about our plan, have Dick come to that meeting and talk about, you know, the process that he plans for years.
That will be December, or should it be next, by next Thursday?
Unless we want to wait until January, because Hank's coming in January.
Well, we didn't communicate with the committee, right, to push the meeting off, but if we need, if the recommendation is to, you know, convene a meeting to talk about financing, we can, we can meet. Once a month, you know, meeting once a month is not, is not that big an issue. So we'll make a, we'll talk about it and make a decision whether or not to have a finance committee meeting this month, or not this month, but in December, or wait till January. Thanks, Patrick. So, sorry, go ahead. Item 9.2, curriculum assessment instruction ID.
So Katie apologizes. She is home and sick in bed, and she's been that way since last Wednesday. So, and she was giving me a hard time because I didn't have my flu shot yet, and she has, so anyway. So just a quick report from her. As you know, we had a professional development day on 11/9, and we had a variety of activities that proved to be a big success that day. High school continued to work on proficiency-based learning assessments and rubrics, and the pre-K to 8 teachers saw a guest speaker, David Eichler, talked about biology of the nervous system and how trauma can impact student learning. During the November PD Day, each school level also watched a presentation that Katie did that received rave reviews. She didn't write that, I put that in. To the district's decision to adopt what's called the Marshall Rubric for Teacher Evaluation and change from the Marzano Rubric. We'll go over that in December. Information was well received, and teachers seemed excited to move forward this year with a similar, more user-friendly system. The ad team has been working in our bi-monthly meetings on increasing the quality of the observation feedback that we give back to staff, and familiarizing ourselves with this new rubric as well. So we go out once a month as an ad team, but we don't all go, it'd be close to 10 of us, but we split it up into three groups, and we go to a different school each month, and we observe teachers that volunteer to have us in their classroom. Then we come back, and we'll do write-ups to practice with each other and be able to collaborate, so we can learn from each other, which has been really good, as well as we ask teachers, and we have a lot of teachers, surprisingly, that will be, will volunteer to be videotaped, and then we will watch that video, tend to that video at an administrative team meeting, and also to improve the feedback that we give to teachers. The district's RTI Behavior Group continues to meet monthly to improve ways behavior is being addressed and to best support students. With the retirement of Lynn Dysart, which we'll get to in a little bit, she's instrumental at the high school, but she also is one of the key people that is in charge of calling our substitutes during the year. So one thing that we are doing is we have decided to work with an online program that will begin after winter break, because she's leaving us in the middle of the year. So we're starting training with staff in December so that everybody's comfortable with that electronic system. And I believe that's it. Any questions?
Any questions of Katie, through Patrick? No? Okay. Hope she feels better. Express the best wishes to the board. Okay, item 9.0, superintendent's report.
Just a couple items. Justin's report you just received tonight, but we did receive correspondence from the Department of Education, I think it might have been close to a month ago now, that they come down and do audits of our special education program, and we received some very complimentary feedback from the Department of Education regarding our paperwork, compliance, and also audits that they do. So it was very complimentary of our entire special education department, and Justin had the help of that. MidCoast Community Alliance, that is a group of people, I think you all know that, but a group of people that are really, are meeting once a month, but really care about the mental health and their anti-suicide group, for students but also for adults in the Saginaw Hawk area, really. It's not just too specific to our four communities. But we, a couple things I want to mention. One is, maybe you saw that the leader of that group, and it wouldn't happen without her, is Jamie Dorr, and if you read the Portland Press Herald on Thanksgiving Day, she was one of those, I guess, faces in the crowd or unsung heroes, and I couldn't think of a better person to receive that recognition. The Yellow Tulip Project was done out in front of Morris High School. That was her initiative that happened before Thanksgiving. The U-Matter Day at Bath Middle School, I think we had 150 people starting at 6:30 on that morning that came out, community members. Chauki sent over probably 30 or 40 high school students that they have, just to come out and show 6th, 7th, and 8th graders that the community and adults care about them in all of our communities. And I'd also like to thank the sponsors. We'll be sending them thank you notes to make this happen, from the bracelets to the video to all the funds behind it. So we will be doing more of these in the future, but it just is a tribute to our community, and RSU One is certainly benefiting from the MidCoast Community Alliance. Parent-teacher conferences, very well attended at all levels, nothing but positive feedback from the staff on that. Woolwich, I hopefully you picked up on this in Jason's report, they interview veterans every year. I think this year they took it a little bit further, and they invited 50 veterans who attended assembly, and it was a moving experience, and it was a great way for our students to understand what it is to be a veteran and have that appreciation for veterans. And then at BMS, it was neat to have the University of Maine at Warano, their innovation engineering class came to BMS to help them further support the Green Crab and Ocean Sustainability Expedition that you've heard about. And then lastly, Moiboo was very well attended. I went Friday night, and it was a really wonderful event, and very interesting to see how high school students blend in the theme of the current Morris High School and knowing that we're getting a new Morris High School. So we had a student that was acting as Charles Morris, and we had, we had a panel, I think there were supposed to be board members and maybe myself, that were listening to the community about the needs and wants in a new high school. So it was very, I thought it was very well done. That's it.
9.2, financial report.
Tonight we're looking at year-to-date as of the end of October, our financial report. We have spent $5.9 million, almost $6 million so far, 20% compared to 28 for last year. Our revenue is $9 million, 31%. Last year it was 37.7 at this point, so a little bit higher last year. Just basically a timing of recording tuition revenue, I think, is the, was the major difference. Right now, the state's working on approving enrollment numbers and staff numbers so that they can calculate our 2019 subsidy. So hopefully they'll send us a little bit more. And right now, this time of year, we take a look at budget versus actual tuition numbers for revenue coming in and expenses going out. The rates have not been set by the state because that's one thing they need to do, is look at all the numbers, but as far as the number of students, we budgeted 130, we have 130. We have more elementary than we do secondary, so once the rates come in, we can take a look at where we're at with that major piece of the budget. And also, next month you'll see encumbered the payroll, so we'll be able to get a better sense of where the year's going to take us. Hank, our auditor has been, is done, and copies of the audit were delivered in my office. We'll post something on the website, PD app, but if anybody wants copies, let me know. Questions?
Questions, Deb. Thank you, Deb. Actually, I just want to go back to good news for a minute, and you know, now that we're entering the holiday season, a lot of the schools, as you all know, start to have their concerts and other performances, and I know most of you are tuned in to, and have kids participating in some of those programs, but I just want to make the statement, hopefully we get, we get good participation from parents, we always do, and the community at large can come in and see what the musical and what talent we have in our schools, and it shows the work's effort, not only on the part of the kids, obviously, but the teachers to put those programs together, and hopefully we'll get, we'll get some good community turnout for some of those. Okay, 10.0, whole business. We have the review of the 2017-18 goals, and Patrick, you wanted to, we had discussed briefly, you wanted to put some dates on some of the presentations to the board, if you're not prepared to know that.
Yeah. I just did send an email out to you, just recommending if it works for the board. I know it gets busy during budget season, but next month, having Katie and probably one or two principals coming, and to talk about the teacher evaluation system, which is Goal Four, and then presentation for Goal Three, which is the RTI Response to Intervention. We were planning that for March, and Goal Two, which is the Communications, a good time to do that would be April or May. And then Goal One, I think it's kind of a no-brainer. I mean, we're always talking about it, which we need to, but if the board feels like another update, we'll always give you monthly updates, but if you'd like to have Ron Mar come back at some point, we can always do that for, you know, for that goal that we have.
Can we just ask a specific question on Goal One? Because we will be a project manager for that. Have you talked to Ron about when that process, identifying the project manager, and just in general?
I haven't, I haven't asked Ron for a couple things. One is to give me a timeline in writing. He's given me a draft, a timeline of to get us through the site work that would start in June, and then I need to get my head wrapped around that project manager, and there was a different system used when we get Woolwich, and there's no more Bureau of General Services for school projects, so I believe there's going to be somebody from the team that we're meeting with at Department of Education that may be overseeing the project, so I need to get a better handle on that. And then also, we need to solidify a budget for the site, and then how much oversight do we need when it comes to the actual site work? Can we do that ourselves, or how much, how much do we need?
Okay. Okay, thanks very much. We have a couple of action items. 10.2, second reading of Policy JIIIB2, inter-scholastic activity athletics eligibility for Bath Middle School and Woolwich Central School. Anybody have any questions on that policy? Can I get a motion to approve? Show or adopt?
Second.
Motion from Bill, second by Alan. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, thank you. And second reading of Policy FF, naming of facilities. Again, this is an action item. Can I get a motion to adopt?
Adoption.
Motion by Alan, second by Lou. Any questions? Good thing we're visiting this now. We have major naming opportunities out there. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. 11.0, new business. 11.1, personnel issues. Patrick?
We have two retirements at this time. First person is Lynn Dysart, who was Secretary at Morris High School. She's been with us for 30 years, and there's a lot that she does that he probably won't even know about until after she leaves. But she is retiring effective at the end of December, and we are in the process right now of interviewing candidates, or will be starting soon. The second one is Jay Pinkerton, Principal at Morris, and Jay's been with us for five years, and really would like to spend more time with his wife, who is retired, you know, effective this year, and their granddaughter, and so I'd like to thank them both for their service to RSU One. Regarding the high school principalship, Katie and I will be meeting with more staff this Wednesday to talk about the process, formulate an ad, get the characteristics that the staff would like to see in a new principal. Our tentative timeline right now, which can change, would be to put an ad out by December 15th, run it for a month, and then interview before February vacation because there'll be other high schools looking for principals, and if we don't find someone that's a good fit, then we can have time to go out for a second round if we needed to. And we would like to have, like we've done in the past, at least one board member on that committee, so if you have an interest, please just send me an email. Thanks.
Both of, both of those resignations will be, our people, sorry, Lynn has enormous institutional memory of what does on Morris and how it should operate. That'll be a tough position to fill, and Jay has, has not been in the district all that long, but he's made a significant positive impact on Morris, which students and parents and the community alike certainly appreciate. So we wish them both well, and hopefully we'll see Jay back here before, before he leaves. Okay, 11.2, we have to formally approve the computation and declaration of votes from the referendum. I don't think we need to read that, but we do have a motion, which Lou will read.
On the second page, right? So Regional School Unit Number One, Lower Kennebec Region School Unit hopes to be adopted by the school board. Voted that the computation and declaration of votes dated November 27, 2017, and attached here to be approved. Further voted that the computation and declaration of votes be entered upon the records of Regional School Unit Number One, Lower Kennebec Region School Unit. Further voted that a certified copy of the computation and declaration of votes be sent to each of the municipal clerks within the RSU.
Do I have a motion, or do I have a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Should I get that motion? We don't need to say.
No, that was the first, so it's second.
That's the second. Sorry, I'm sorry. Lou was not just reading for his own benefit.
No.
It was actually the motion. Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Passes, thank you. 11.3, we have a field trip request. So we need approval of an outer state field trip request for gifted and talented students to compete at the world finals in Iowa in May 2018. This is an action item, but it's my understanding they haven't yet been invited to participate. They have qualified, but this is just an anticipation of them qualifying because we're all very positive. We're sure they're going to make it, so we're doing this ahead of time. So do I have a motion to approve?
I vote second.
A second?
The motion by Lou, second. By Alan, all in favor? Any opposed? Ten passes. Thank you. We know they're going.
When they qualify.
Okay, so last item under new business, whole business. This is new business. 11.4, discussion of planning pickup for missed school days from the power outage. Patrick?
So the administrative team has met, and we need to make up those three days that we missed. And by Department of Education standards, that's five hours a day, so that's, you know, a total of 15 hours. So the recommendation from the administrative team would be to make the January 26 Professional Development Day a student day. We still need to ask the question is, does that discount as five hours, or if we're in session for seven hours with teachers, we think it should count for, I mean, with students, it should count for seven hours. It's a minor detail, in my opinion. We then talked about late start Wednesdays. We talked about everything. We talked about April vacation, we talked about adding an hour on the day, we talked about going on a Saturday. We just felt like probably the best thing to do was to, so to speak, dip into our late start Wednesdays and have students come at the regular time, which is about an hour, 15, hour 20 when they do that. We first talked about doing it in January, so that we were, I guess, being proactive before or while the snow was coming, you know, because we don't know how many more snow days we're going to have. But then as an administrative team, we just felt like, number one, our late start Wednesday professional development time, we felt is really important in the middle of the year so teachers can implement the things that they learn. Plus, we could have snow days on those Wednesdays in January. So we felt like we would do the January 26, make up about close to half of that time that we need to, and then back out the late start Wednesday time that we need from, say, the middle of June, back probably into May at some point. As far as letting parents know and staff know, I mean, we certainly can... As far as letting parents know and staff know, I mean, we certainly can send out an email soon letting them know about January 26. It probably would be the end of March before we could, you know, solidify how many Wednesdays we need to back out from the end of the school year, but I still, hopefully, gives parents enough time, gives them a couple months, and I don't know that that inconvenes parents, you know, as much as me and adding an hour to the day or going on a vacation or, so that's what the ad team's recommendation would be. I wanted to bring it to you to see if you have any questions. You do approve our calendar, and it would be nice, I know it put discussion on the agenda, but it would be nice if you could, if you are in favor of this, that you could make a motion and show support for it, but if you have questions or you're against it, I'm open to any ideas you might have as well.
Any, any questions, Patrick, on how this planning worked? Have you discussed it with the association at this point?
No, I haven't. I wanted to come here first and just have this, have this conversation. We just, I really just talked about it with the administrative team.
So it's, so the January 26 would be tomorrow, and then subtitles in March for the Wednesday?
We would, so for example, if we needed six late start Wednesdays after the snow season's over, and we realize we've gone over our five days, we look at our calendar and we feel like we're going a little too late into the season, to the, to the summertime, that we would announce in March that we would back out, like, say, six late start Wednesdays, so that might be two from June and then three, three or four more in May, so then we wouldn't have any going, you know, going forward, say, after May 10th, as an example, just because we, more towards the end of the year, they're not as, I wouldn't say they're not as productive, but, you know, implementing as many ideas in a school year as you are when you're doing it in January. So again, right now, I believe, January, I mean, June 15th is our last student day if we use all five of our snow days. So at this point right now, we've technically used three, and so we just need to keep an eye on that. I mean, June 15th is a Friday, there's nothing that says we can't go into the next week. It's, you know, comparable, it's even earlier than what we got out last year because of the snow days we had to use. So we'll just have to find that balancing point. That's all.
I mean, in, in many ways, this seems the least disruptive approach to this, disruptive in the sense of how it affects parents and their schedule.
I would just think that it would be good if we're going to do these, if we do them in a cluster, so it's not, parents are not going, is this one of those late, late start Wednesdays? Is this one good or not? If, you know, we need to do three, it would be the last three Wednesdays or something, you know, to block it out.
We talked about that. That's a good question.
Okay, so what's your, what's your, what's the pleasure of the board? We don't, we don't have a written, we don't have the, the actual adjustments on the calendar in front of us, but are we, if we're, if we're generally supportive of this, then I would call for a motion if we approve the admin team's recommendation and would fill that. So if anyone wants to make that motion?
Yeah, so, so we'll, that, well, you said, we, we go, I think you said it just fine, so, then we go with the admin team's recommendation for monitoring and taking care of the making of the days as we proceed through the year.
And a motion from Lou, second?
Second.
Second from Jen. All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Thanks, Patrick. 12.0, it's our second public set, public comment period. Any comments? Okay. 13.0, adjourned, but we don't, we don't, we usually have the next board meeting set here, which we don't.
So we, we don't have one set in December, just because it's not the, you know, it's a holiday week, but December 18th is that Monday, and I think an email went out to say what seemed to work well with people last, last year is, we suggested to meet at 3:30 at central office for what we call the board retreat to start to have that discussion about budget priorities, and then at 6 o'clock, be to remind me, where are we that night?
Fisher Mitchell.
At Fisher Mitchell. So it, it works for the administrative team and to meet at 3:30 with you as a group for, say, two hours, and then hand over to Fisher Mitchell for a 6 o'clock meeting. Does that work for everybody here, or is that too early?
I'm sorry, where are we meeting, 3:30?
Central office, downstairs in the room, see? I hope.
Okay, so the board, the board retreat, which I guess is considered a birdshot, will be at 3:30 in the central office, and then at 6 o'clock, a regular board meeting at Fisher Mitchell, that's December 18th. And I just want to just quickly highlight some of those performance dates, since they're listed on our agenda, but just to put them out there to the public generally. So on, on December 5th, Morris High School is having its winter concert. On December 7th, Woolwich 5th Grade Band and Chorus Concert. On December 12th, the Pittsburgh Winter Concert.
That's the J, the 11.
That's been changed to the 11, okay. December 11th, Pittsburgh Elementary Winter Concert. December 18th, Fisher Mitchell Winter Concert, and December 20th, Bath Middle School Winter Concert. We've got a lot of music coming up in the month of December. Okay, no other business. Get a motion to adjourn. From Lou. Bill has me second. Anita, we have a second. Motion by Bill, second by Anita. All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you very much.
Do we have to sign? Okay. Do we have to sign this?
Yeah. Just one.
Even though it has to go, everybody can make copies, make a copy.